Everybody, if we can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, good evening. Alright, so this is our first meeting of our newly elected board. So welcome back to all us old timers who were re-elected, but we'd like to welcome Jessica, who is one of our new board members, and also Jeff, who's the other new board member. Welcome along. Unfortunately, you get thrown right in the fire this evening, because we start right off the bat with budget, budgets, and we are starting those tonight, and so, yeah, we don't ease you in here on the Board of Education. We're right, right to the get-go. So, welcome. And please, as I told you each individually, if you have questions, ask, ask, ask. Because we will sometimes, since we know this stuff, we'll just keep going, and if you don't know what we're talking about, stop us and ask, please. We will move on to item B. With every new, with every time we have an election in town, we need to re-elect our leadership on the Board of Education. So this is our first meeting after our elections, so we need to revote on the position of chairman, vice-chairman, and secretary. So I'm going to hand that over to John Batista, who is going to handle that too, for neutrality purposes.
Great, thank you, Ben. So the first position we're going to vote on and elect is for chairman. So let's start with the nominations. Does anyone like to put a nomination on the floor?
I'd like to nominate Donna Lane for chairman.
Sasha.
Any other nominations from the floor? Okay, that being said, no nominations. We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Okay, so let's vote. Chairman Donna, if we're voting for chairman for Donna Lane, all of those in favor?
Thank you.
So now, we are looking for nominations for vice-chair. Any nominations on the floor?
I'd like to nominate George King for vice-chair.
A second?
Second.
Appreciate that.
Great, thank you. We will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you. Do I have a second, Jerry? Any discussion on the consent agenda? Alright, hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons. Before I start, our committee assignments will be our next meeting, so that will be on the 18th. So we will have the list out to everybody, so start thinking of the committees, or if you just want to stay on the same committee you're on. Massey Student Raps.
This Wednesday, we will have the World Language Arts Society induction. It is for students who have been committed to world language for, I think it's all four years, and have gotten good grades in those classes. There will be a food drive going on through our advisory classes, going on this week and next week, and it's designed to help families in need during the holiday season. Our football team made it to the state championship after a win this Sunday against New Canaan, and they will play against Daniel Hand, who we unfortunately lost to in the soccer championship a few weeks ago, but we're looking for payback. It'll be at 11 o'clock AM at Veterans Stadium in New Britain.
Massey will be having a blood drive tomorrow. This Thursday, there'll be early dismissal for an eighth grade open house, which staff come back and they promote programs, stuff like that. I know my, my teacher, Mrs. Kreeno, Mrs. Kreeny, you may know, she wants me to come for DECA, and FBLA comes, and all the clubs for Massey come for eighth grade orientation and kind of advertise ourselves and show all that Massey has to offer these kids and prospective students. And also, there's going to be a band concert next Thursday at 7:00 PM in the auditorium.
This past Saturday, there was a huge robotics competition at Massey, and there were 55 teams across all of New England that competed. There were 1,000 students here, and it was all organized by Mr. McDonough and the 14 Massey Robotics Teams that spanned across both the high school and the middle school. Winter sports are now underway, as the majority of the tryouts were conducted this past weekend. And finally, throughout all lunch waves this month, today and tomorrow, FBLA had their miracle minute where members of the club run around the lunchroom and try to collect any donations they can, which go straight to St. Jude's Hospital.
Great, thank you, and you guys can take off. Does anybody else have any committee reports this evening? Alright, hearing none, we will move on to public participation. Seeing none, we will move on to the report of the superintendent.
Okay, well, before we start the budget presentation, there is one thing that I wanted to share with you, and this is about Medicaid reimbursement. This says Medicare, but it is Medicaid reimbursement. The budget, the governor's budget, I'm sorry, the state budget that was just passed has a provision that all boards of education must submit Medicaid, for Medicare reimbursement for students who qualify. In the past, Monroe hasn't really done that, because there really wasn't much for us to apply for. But now, it's part of the state law. So K. Moser, Director of Student Support Services, has done some investigation, talked to a lot of area schools, and there really are two ways to do this. The first one is called Frontline, and it's through our IEP system, and it seems like the bigger districts do this. And our staff inputs the data, and then through the program that we have to purchase and training, we can submit the Medicare, I'm sorry, Medicaid payment. What we found out is that the first year, it cost $8,500 to set it up, and for two days' worth of training, and then every year after that is $7,000. Now, if you're a big district and you get tens of thousands of dollars towards that, that's probably a good deal. What we also discovered is that a smaller districts are using something called Compuclaim. And Compuclaim, we give Compuclaim the information, and they put the information into a program, and then we, they give us a report to submit to the state. What they do is take 11% of whatever we get back. So for us, we feel the second choice is probably the best choice, since we don't know how much we're going to get back. We certainly don't think we're going to get back enough to, the first year, to cover that cost. And then, in the years coming, if we feel that we're getting more back, and it would be more advantageous to us to do the 8,500 and the 7,000 a year, we can always do that. But right now, because we don't know how much we're getting back, we would, we want to go forward with the Compuclaim, the 11% of whatever it is we get back. So there's no real, no real problem for us, because if we only get back $1,000, they're only going to take 11% of the $1,000. So that's why I'd like to move forward, but just like to see if you have any questions or comments about that.
That makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
So, and we'll keep you informed on how much we get back, and then if it's, for some reason, a lot of money, it might be more advantageous to us to do the $8,000. But right now, we'll go with it.
And how much time does it take to enter all this stuff in?
We have to have parent permission first, so until we get that back, we don't even know how many kids will be participating. And we, it's so unknown to us, I don't know how long it's going to take. We're going to keep that on all that, so just we know.
Right.
It's pretty quick.
Will Gabby's sign, enter the information for you?
No, because they need our data.
You have to enter it to give it out.
But Compuclaim?
Compuclaim comes and trains the staff on how to enter it into the system, and then it's all done through Compuclaim. It's not the secretary of ours that has to sit and kind of go through all that.
It's our secretary who does that.
I use both of them. It's pretty quick.
Okay. And what happens if the parent doesn't give permission for it?
We can't provide for that child.
Okay. Well, I am curious to see if it even yields anything.
Right, and we'll, and we'll know that probably.
We probably won't know this year, because we're not going to go full year. We will not be actually enrolled until after January, so, but we give you an idea of what a half-year wait.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. And so now, we're going to present the budget, and Jack and I are going to sit over there, because we're going to put everything up on the screen, and we're going to start with the executive summary. Let me share that with you. As we've said so many times, this process is a long process. We started this right in the beginning of October, when we met with everyone, and we have been really working on this budget every week since that time. And so now, what we're going to present to you is our estimated of the operating budget for 2018-19. Jack and I were part of building this budget, we did it together, and actually, the other people behind us were also part of the budget. But once we got all the information from all our, you know, the leadership from behind, Jack and I sat down with Gabby, and we put together this budget. So since we put it together, and since Jack's going to live with the budget, we thought we would present it together. So that's why we're both here, and we will present it with you. So we built this budget always thinking of the students. And I know that's a cliche, but that's truly what happened. As we were thinking about what we needed in this budget, as we were thinking about what we needed to go forward, we always had the end in mind. And for us, the end in mind is producing students that can participate in post-high school education if they want, to go to the world of work and be prepared for that. So we started with the end in mind, and we were doing, we were putting things in the budget that we thought that would ensure the success of our students. You know this mission statement? We live it. And actually, we, when we make a decision in the district, we go back to this mission statement, and the goals and action plans that we'll talk about later. But we go to those areas, because if it doesn't meet our mission, we're not going to go forward with it. So we want our students to be innovative thinkers, we want to deliver the best inquiry-based curriculum that our teachers can give, that are, these teachers are skilled, that they're dedicated, and they're engaged. And that's what we want our students to be able to come out with when they don't. Our educational goal is to provide the support for all students to graduate and be, and have college and career-ready skills, and you've heard that all across the country. But in Monroe, as you can see, from what we, from our awards, from where our students go after high school, it's really working. And we know, I've been here a long time, we want to be fiscally responsible. We want to make sure that we're spending reasonably and responsibly, so that our students' needs are met. And so that's what this budget does.
So to John's last point, we want to give you a history of spending here in the Monroe Public Schools. If you look at this chart we have on the screen, this is a history of the last 10 years of spending increases in education. I want to highlight the last seven years, from 1112 through 1718. Within those seven years, there were three zeros, and all of the other increases remained below 2%. Consistent with that, the proposed increase for this year is 1.84%. This next chart shows you CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index. This is a measure of inflation, it comes out October 1 every single year, and that is these, the red line that you see here. And then the blue line that you see is our spending increases over the past years. And what you'll note here again, in this last seven years, is that our spending increases have remained below CPI every year, with the exception of one year here in 1516, we're about a half percent above CPI that year. But other than that one exception, we've remained below that Consumer Price Index every single year. As you can see in last year, that the delta, or the difference between our increase at zero, and the Consumer Price Index was a full 2%. The reason why that's relevant is that our dollars need to stretch further when that exists. When we remain below CPI, we have to expend monies to pay for the same goods and services as everybody else. At home, when our oil prices go up an additional 2%, we don't have a choice, we have to pay that additional 2%. So when we're flat, we have to find ways to make up for that 2%, and we'll highlight some of the things that we're doing to stretch dollars and be as fiscally responsible as we possibly can.
There are two revenue streams that come to either the town or the district for education, and they're, they're confusing, so I really wanted to take a few minutes to kind of discuss this. Last year, when, at the end of the year, when the governor presented his budget, there were some things in that that really worried school systems, as you well know, we've been living with that. So the Educational Cost Share Grant, the ECS Grant, in the past was over $6 million, but the governor proposed that we would get cut, and so the town, the Board of Finance, projected a $3 million Educational Cost Share, ECS Grant, that we would get, that Monroe would get. And that money, that ECS money goes directly to the town. The Excess Cost Grant, which is the special ed grant, the governor increased our excess cost grant to 1.5 million. So when we built the current budget that we're living in, we built it with the lower educational cost share, the ECS Grant, and the higher excess cost special ed grant. We built that into the budget. Well, what happened, once the budget passed, a couple of things happened. Instead of the projected $3 million ECS cost, ECS grant, we, we actually got 5.5 million. So we got more on that side. But instead of the 1.5 million for the excess cost special ed grant, we only got 871. So you can see the difference. The difference in 1718 is, the town received over 2.5 million more than they thought, but we, the educational special ed grant, the excess cost grant, we were 628,000 less. So what happened when the town created a budget, is that they created a contingency, million-dollar contingency, and we are going to request that that million-dollar contingency cover our 628,000 dollar shortfall. Now, again, we believe that that could happen, we're going to request that, and so we're, we built that budget with that in mind. So when you, we used to have that 1.84%, that includes the 628,000 that we were less in the excess cost grant, because we're going, we believe we'll get that back from the contingency. I know that was very confusing, but that's, those are the two revenue streams that we just wanted to share and tell you what we're thinking as we're going through this budget. So with that cut, with that governor's cut, there was a million-dollar cut to the Board of Ed. So this year, one central office administrator was cut, two nurses, both of which we could live without, because the students weren't here in the closing of St. Jude's. There was a bus that was cut, we cut a high school teacher. Those three K5 subject area coordinators that I've talked about forever, math, language arts, and science, were cut. We cut professional development, that means professionals throughout the summer didn't happen, and we still had some cuts during the year, and we cut curriculum writing. Again, didn't happen over the summer, and we cut some during the year. That's what, what was happening. We were hoping that the million-dollar contingency that was coming back, we could bring some of these programs back, but because of that cut in the special ed grant, we're going to have to use that contingency to fill that hole. So that's where we are now. And I've said this before, and I'll, I'll say it to whoever will listen to me, that those subject area coordinators, not really a problem this year, we've kind of gone through that, but if we don't put those subject area coordinators, those K5 subject areas are not going to have the consistency that they need. That's not going to happen after the second year and the third year. They really, they work with the state, they know what's happening with the state, they bring it to the teachers, all the new ideas that come up, we're just starting the next-generation science standards, those K5 coordinators bring that to the elementary school. And the same thing with professional development. I think of professional development as research and development. Companies spend a huge percentage of their budget on research and development. We spend a small amount on professional development, again, not a problem this year, but as we go through the years and we don't get that professional development money back, we're going to see a definite change. So, the parameters for the budget, sorry. What did we, what did we want to do? Well, we wanted to fund, we, we seek the funds to support our mission and vision. And then, and again, you know what our mission is, you helped write it five years ago. Class size does matter. And we keep a real, appropriate class size at elementary school especially, and we go up, so class size matters to us. You know, we have core academics, and that's very important, but we know that's supported by our electives and our co-curricular programs. So we wanted to keep that in mind as we did that. And if we have to reduce, and we did have to reduce, as you can imagine, when the principals and the directors came to us, this budget was a little bit different than 1.84, as you can well imagine. So we worked with them to get it down to a reasonable, what we felt was a reasonable number, and we tried to make those changes that affect the fewest amount of students. We didn't want that to happen. Okay, so here's the budget overview. Now, we have these expense categories, and we're going to go through those during our budget workshops, but I just wanted to highlight a few of them, so that you can see where that 1.84% came from. So the first thing I want to, to show you is that salary and benefits, and we're going to talk about that in a minute, that's where much of the increase happened in those salaries and benefit lines. And again, those are contractual, and those benefits, you know, you live it in your world, and we live it in our world, those benefits are high. The special ed instruction, we're down 10% in special ed, and that's because of the hard work of that department. That, that reduction comes from public tuition, which there were five students who are no longer in public, not in Monroe, they're no longer in out-of-district public institutions, they're back in Monroe. So that's five students for that. And the other is private students, private tuition. We, you know, as we had the special ed program, that our, some of our students are in private placements. Some of that happens before they got here, and they moved in, and we had to continue those private places. Sometimes it's a, it's just a, it happens through a PPT, and there's students in private placements. Next year, we were able to bring back, we were able to have three less students in private placements. Two are coming back in the district. So that saved about 10%. And if you were here last year, you know that that was a big cost last year to our budget. So we're very happy with how that worked out. The other thing I wanted to show you is, under Other, it says 23% increase, that's $48,000. That's a truck that we need to buy as part of our capital, our capital replacement program that Jack's going to talk about at the end, but that whole thing has to do with, that whole increase has to do with a truck. That's actually 55,000, but we've saved some money in other places, so that's why it's a $48,000 increase. And then the Honeywell lease payment. Now, Honeywell is, there are two different payments in Honeywell. One is a payment that we'll be going to be paying for the next four years, and it's, I think, $300,000, $301,000. But then we had this loan that CLMP at the time gave us, called a parole loan, which helped pay for some of those Honeywell projects, and that's going to be, that's paid off. So that's why, that's a savings of $45,000, so that's what you see. If you go to the next slide, this is a graph representation of what we're talking about. Look at the blue and the red, that's salary and benefits. That's over 80% of the budget is salary and benefits. We're a people business. We're not making widgets, we can't, we don't need to buy materials to make something. We're a people business to educate students, so 80% of the budget is, is salary and benefits. And then you can see the other little parts that, that make up the budget, and you can see there, like, the percentage, a pictorial graph, a representation of that. You know, transportation costs are there, and that's next, and then you can see special ed, and energy, things like that. So here are some highlights. When we think about this budget, we think about, what is it we want to highlight? What is it we want you to know about this budget? And so here's, here are the highlights. We have reduced our staff by 3.5 full-time equivalents, that's what FTE stands for, 3.5 full-time equivalents for certified staff. That means we've cut one and a half staff members next year at Massey High School, and we, we believe we could do that because of enrollment. We cut one from Jockey Hollow and one from Monroe Al. Again, all because of student reductions. We've cut 1.5 non-certified staff. That's a one custodian at the high school, and we believe that's because of the turf field. We're, it's less maintenance, it's taking less time to manage that turf field, so we were able to cut one custodian at Massey High School for that. And the .5 is a half-time secretary at the central office. We're going to reduce the amount of time that we're going to use at central office, and part of that is, we've cut an administrator up there last year, and we think we can do it with, with the staff that we have there. You know, medical and dental increases, 400,000. I have to be honest, I'm a little worried about that. We put that placeholder in, I'm not sure that's going to be enough. But we had to put a placeholder in, that's where we are. We'll know more in February. We see a better trend, not, you know, Gabby's not jumping up and down about that yet, but we do see a better trend, so we're hoping that that $400,000 increase insurance will cover that. That includes that $301,000 for the Honeywell lease payments, again, in four years, Gabby, right, four years, we said?
22, 23, fiscal '23, it should be over.
That'll be over. And, and Jack's going to show you really what we benefited from that Honeywell project. You know, there are contractual salary increases that we've all negotiated. There is a one-ton plow truck in the operating budget, because we don't want to get to the point where we have, you know, two trucks, or three trucks that need to be, we want to replace it on a schedule, so that, and this is the next truck, it's $55,000. We are reinstating two of the three K5 coordinators in this budget. Now, why two of the three? Well, of course, we would, we would want to replace all three, but again, we're trying to be fiscally responsible. Sheila Cassinelli, who is the K-12 Curriculum Director in the district, has a, an English background, was a principal in elementary school, has the English Language Arts background, so she's going to take the role of the K5 English Language Arts Coordinator, and then we're going to hire the math and the science. We have reinstated three of the elementary technology paraeducators that were out of the budget as part of that million-dollar cut. We are seeing some holes in technology, and so we're hoping that, that, that it's 45,000, or $55,000, we're hoping that having those technology paraeducators back, we can fill some of those holes that are there. And the other thing is $20,000 for social worker hours. Now, that's new in the budget. We haven't had that before. But we are finding more and more families with needs. And the town has a social worker, that's a part-time social worker, and, and she's helped, and she's, and she's really collaborated with our, our school, but it's really not enough. And we're seeing more and more and more families who need, who have needs, and so we're asking for $20,000, which is a .2 FTE, to include in the budget, so that we can have some time for a social worker to meet those high-need families. So that's what's in this budget also. And then, again, the state grants continue to be uncertain, the ECS Grant, although the budget told us what we're going to get next year, I don't think anybody really believes it yet. So we're, it's uncertain, so we're worried about the grant, but we're going to go with what we think it's going to be next year.
So in this slide, you see our enrollment over time, and I want to call your attention to the most recent three years there, where you see the enrollment flatten out. Back in 2015, when Mylona McBroom completed the demographic study for us, they actually predicted that in this year, we would be 136 students less than we currently are. So what we're starting to see here is, rather than this downward trend, which has continued for quite a few years, we're seeing that that trend, at least in the last three years, is, is changing, that it's flattening out, and we're seeing a more consistent number of students within our schools. Related to that, this slide shows you grade level by grade level, our student enrollment across the K-12 continuum here. There are just two grades I want to call to your attention. One is Grade K for 2018. That has to be a projection, we don't know how many students we're going to have in Grade K next year, so that is taken straight from the Mylona McBroom demographic study. And then also, the other projection is Massey ninth grade. One of the things with high schools is that students have a lot of choices when they go off to high school, whether it be vocational programs or the like. One of the interesting things about Massey is, we retain a lot of students. We retain 90-plus percent of our students who come to Massey. It's really a very good percentage. A lot of other districts, it's significantly less than that. So I think it speaks very well for the quality of programming we have here. All of the other grade levels that you see are taken straight from the year before. So those are actual numbers in the pipeline, no, no changes up or down, those are, those are solid numbers looking into the future.
And those are the October 1st actual numbers, and as you know, those are the numbers that the state tells us to use, so October 1st. Our numbers have increased since October 1st, because we've had kids move in, but we're using the October 1st to be consistent, October 1st to October 1st.
The next chart shows you some information about middle school enrollment. One of the questions we get often is, when will STEM move back to the main campus at Jockey Hollow? So we put together a graph that gives you some good information about how things look moving into the future. So to John's point here, for 1718, the current school year, October 1, these are our actual enrollments, K through 12, and this connects directly back to the previous slide that you just saw. In grade 7 and 8, that's a summation of
In grade seven and eight, that's a summation of students in those grades, 786 students. Now, that's red for a reason. Capacity at Jockey Hollow is 700 students. There was a time when we had a little more than 700 in that building, but when we did that, we had to bring in other lockers, and programming has changed since the time that was done. So bringing students back over 700 would mean a reduction in some of the programming that's offered, and it would also mean a reduction in the quality of services for students in terms of fitting them all into the building. So at that threshold of 700, we can follow this chart, and if we go to looking at the current five, six, seven students, when they are in six, seven, eight, the following year, that gives us a total of 727 students, still in the red. Following year for 1920, our current four, five, six students, they'll be in six, seven, eight in 1920, so we have 709. We're getting closer. It's yellow for a reason. We do see, as John mentioned, we do have students moving in. So that number could become red, or if we have some move out, it could become green. It's an unknown at this point, and something we'll need to keep our eyes on. Whereas, you really see a shift now as we get into 2021. Again, using actual numbers within our district, we'll be at 677, which, if things remain that way, would be comfortably within that 700 threshold to be able to fit all students back into the main campus at that point in time. And then if you follow for the successive years, we've remained below that threshold, so we'd be able to sustain keeping all students within one campus at that point.
So, since 2008-9, we have lost 891 students. So the question's always, well, you lose, your enrollment's gone down, what's happened with the staff? So certified staff, you can see, since 2008-9, we have reduced our certified staff by 53.6 certified staff members. And the same thing with non-certified, we've reduced it by 17.78. You know, people say, well, when you lose 25 students, you should be able to cut a teacher. Or if you have 25 students enroll, you should only, you know, you should only increase it by one teacher. But it never really works out that way. If that were the case, 891 students divided by 25 students in a classroom, a class size, we should have only reduced it by 35 teachers. But again, it doesn't work that way. We look at the best way to, you know, to gain savings, and where we need them and where we don't need them. So this chart really just talks about the decrease in the number of staff members as our students have decreased, we've done that. And, you know, non-certified has been less of a decrease, but you know, those non-certified paraeducators, or intervention tutors, or speech assistants really help our students stay in the district, so it hasn't reduced as much because we're using them more effectively, we think, to keep our students in our district.
So relative to the last slide, this is a graphic version of what you were looking at before. So this is our certified staff members in red here, our certified staffing rate over time. And in the blue shows you our student enrollment over time. So what you can see, to John's point, is we have made cuts to our teaching staff proportionately over time, and we're looking to do that in a way where we're maintaining good class sizes and also ensuring that we're being fiscally responsible, so that we are looking to get the best of both worlds. Similarly, this is non-certified staff now. So what you're seeing in the red is non-certified staffing rates. In the blue, again, is our student enrollment, and again, you see this proportional relationship between the two. Again, looking to keep a good proportion between students and staff, at the same time, looking to achieve the most fiscally responsible outcomes we can attain.
Our goal in this presentation is to have you get a glimpse on what we were thinking about as we were putting together this budget. That's why we showed you the STEM information, and this is another one of those slides, just to tell you about what we were thinking about as far as the medical costs. You can see, the blue line is the total cost of our medical. That's the blue line. And the red line is the Board of Ed's contribution. You can see in 2011, the Board of Ed paid a higher percentage of the total cost than we're anticipating in 2019, 20. Yes, we're up $400,000K. We're, part of that is because of the medical reserve that's low, we want to continue that to go up. But it's our hope that through rebidding with our insurance broker, that we're going to save some more money, that we'll be able to get that reserve healthier than it is right now. Again, it's going up a little bit, but certainly not where we want it to be, and not where it was when we made the deal with the town to, you know, take some money out of it and help with the budget. So, medical is always a wild card, we're always concerned about that, but we wanted to show you that we really believe that the percentage that our employees are paying is a bigger percentage, and that's thanks to you and to the negotiations. We, you know, really, we've really done a lot to kind of rein in that cost. So, what is the proposed staff changes, and I just want to be clear on this. We have cut the education certified staff by 3.5 FTEs, but we've added those two coordinators. So when you look at it, it really is a net loss of 1.5 certified staff members. We did cut the 1.5 non-certified, as we talked about. We added the paraeducators in. We put the $20,000, or the way we talk about it is a .2 FTE for the social worker. And here's something that we've done that costs no money, but we think will help us. And that is a name change. Each school, each elementary school have reading specialists, and we know reading is the most important thing, and we want our students to be able to read. And if you look at how well we score compared to our DRG and in the state, we do very, very, very well in reading. You're talking about top one or two in our DIRG. And that's because we spend a lot of resources doing that. What we have proposed for next year is that we're going to change the name of the reading specialists to teacher interventionists. They are still going to work on reading, there's no doubt about it, but if a student has a need in math, because we don't perform as well, we still perform pretty good in the state, actually, very good in the state, but not as high as reading, but if a student has some, needs some support in math, by changing the name, we're giving everybody a license to work with that kid in different subject areas. So that's our discussion. We have gone around and talked to the reading specialists, so that we want them to know that reading is still our number-one focus, we want that to be there. But if we find a student that needs some help and support in math, we want to be able to do that. Or in organizational skills, we want them to have the freedom to be able to do that. And each school has a team that looks at data and then decides how they're going to work with students, and we want them to have the freedom to say, just because you're a reading specialist, you know, don't feel like you always have to do reading if you want to do, work in math or in other areas, you can do that. And remember, our students, when we look at the math data, it's about reading. Some of our students have issues with test questions because of the reading anyway. So that's, it's a no-cost to the board, we're keeping the same number of people, we're not adding. We would love to come in and say we'd like to add a math specialist in each school, but we knew that wouldn't be fiscally responsible at this time, so we're trying to do it this way.
And just so you know, this is K-5, this change. So, back towards the beginning of the presentation, one of the things we spoke about was how to stretch dollars. So, the Honeywell project has been one of the ways we've been able to stretch dollars. And what this bar chart shows you, or which this table shows you, is what Honeywell refers to as cost avoidance, it's really savings. And this is a report for this year, we're in year three of the program, and the cost avoidance, or savings for the 16, 17 school year, is $484,295. So by implementing this program, there was costs we avoided, costs that can be applied elsewhere to programming, costs that help us to stretch energy dollars, so that we're using the dollars that we have as best we can. Total savings to date through the program is $1.5 million. So we're seeing some very real savings here. The other good news in this is we have a contractual guarantee with Honeywell. That contractual guarantee for this year was for $419,000. We surpassed that guarantee by $64,000. So we were guaranteed 1.2 million. It totaled to date in the four years, or three years plus implementation year, which was a partial year, we've surpassed the contractual savings by roughly a quarter of a million dollars. So this is one of the places we've really been looking to stretch dollars, to do as much as we can to maximize taxpayers' investment.
So this is another one of those slides that we wanted to just tell you what we're trying to do to help dollars. Donna and I went to a workshop when we went to the CAPS conference last month, and one of the workshops was about shared services. And we're always talking about how can we share services with area, other towns, and how can we share services with the towns that'll be cost savings. So this white paper, which I have a copy of if you want, it was developed by the Connecticut Association of School Business Officials, Gabby's organization, in 2015. And what they did is they looked at ways in which districts in this state shared services. So the next slide shows you a list of areas that other districts shared services, and they can share them with other districts, or they can share them with the town. So what we did is we looked at, what are we in Monroe, where do we share services in Monroe? And are there other places that we can look to share some services? So if you look at that, the first three things are about technology. Monroe has, in the last several years, shared their computer services, their IT support with the town, so we share that with the town.
And if I can just interject on that, we are truly the exception there. I go to a lot of meetings on technology with various towns. I can't tell you of another place where municipal and educational technology services are shared, and it works very, very well for us. So we're very fortunate to have it set up the way that we have it.
And we look at three insurances, our liability insurance, our workers' comp, and our property insurance, and again, we hook up with the town, we share those services with the town, and that's saved us money when we combine services in that area. If you look down, I put in snow removal, we don't share snow removal with the town, but the town has been a wonderful partner in giving us the sand that we need, giving us a machine to help load our trucks. So they've been a good partner, they don't do the removal of our schools, our people do that. But I put that there as both we are independent and we share with town, because they've really been a good partner with that, and we go to meetings every year to talk about how they can help us, and we can't say enough about that. We do share transportation services with other towns, especially in special education, and whenever we can. And I'm going to talk a little bit about what we're doing going forward. You know, certainly, our bidding and purchasing is shared with other districts, we are in consortiums. So if we want to buy colored paper, for instance, for art, we go on the site, the website, that's a consortium with other districts, and we can get it at a very reduced rate. Same thing with energy purchasing. We share that with other districts, it's, we're in a consortium, we get really good cost on that, and we share it with our towns. The town can piggyback off of us and get that energy consortium rate that we have. And then, one of the things in the law that was just passed was that they want boards of education, before they make a decision about financial management software, to consult with the town, and we've already done that, five years ago, with Munis. We share the, we share that software with Munis, with the town. So, we have done a lot of things, certainly there are other things we can do. As I told you in the beginning of the year, the Southwest Superintendent, I'm sorry, the Southern Fairfield County Superintendent's Meet, I'm part of that group, we put together a Google sheet to see where else, little things, I think I shared this with you, like fire extinguisher checks and septic pumping, where we can hook up with other towns in the Southern Fairfield County, so we can go out to bid and say, you want five towns? Give us a better price. Gabby, Gabby went with her group, was it Caspo?
No, it was the Fairfield County Business Managers.
And they're looking about how to save transportation, and how they can save on transportation and maybe go out to bid. And Kay Moser is working with DIRG-B special ed districts to look about saving for transportation. As in effect, part of, if you look, when we get through the next section of this, when we do the workshop, you'll see that Kay is saving money in transportation because she's looking at another provider that could save us some money for that. So we're always looking at that, we're always open to that, and these are other areas that maybe we could share with the town or other districts, but it's something that we wanted to just let you know about. So what are the risks to the budget? Well, state funding is a risk, no doubt about it. Those unanticipated special ed costs, someone could move in tomorrow at a high cost, and we're obligated, and rightly so, to educate those students. Unfunded mandates, we just, I told you last week about the new teacher program, the new teacher induction called TEAM, where the state took away the funding for this year and said, but you still have to do the program. So it's a $10,000 hit to us that we have to cut some other part of our budget to pay for that. Who knows what's going, what other things are going to happen, as far as unfunded mandates from the state. Unanticipated maintenance costs and repairs, a boiler could go down, we have to take care of that, we have to deal with that. And then medical and prescription costs, as always, that's something that scares us, so we don't know about that. So what does this proposed budget do for us? We think it's fiscally responsible at 1.85. It reinstates two of the three curriculum, K-5 curriculum supports in math and science. It provides support for all students in meeting those Connecticut Core Standards. It provides adequate maintenance of the building, something that, you know, Jim Augustine started, and we're proud of. There's a lot of money in buildings, and it's, and this town should be very pleased that we're not letting any building run down, that we're always doing preventative maintenance, and this is something that, you know, this is part of what they have in town, and we're making sure that their buildings are well-kept. And we're reinstating some of those teacher training programs that we lost this year, like those Columbia Reading and Writing Project, the Columbia University Reading and Writing Project, that we've seen some real great benefits for. We want to bring back inquiry education for that summer program, that BYOT, Bring Your Own Technology in the Summer. We're going to continue to work with those Common Core State Standards, I mean, sorry, the Connecticut Core State Standards, and the Next Generation Science Standards, which is coming up. I mean, we're going to be tested on that in a year, and so we have to be prepared, have our students be prepared, so they can, so they can perform as well as the students in the next town. This is a very confusing slide. We have it every year, we talk about it every year, there's just a couple of things I want to point out. If you look at the total cost of this year's education budget, the $55 million, what, and what we always talk about is, the tax cost to the town is $47 million because we have these other grants. The real thing I want to point out is that the special ed excess cost, which is the 871, which is what actually we got this year, we did not inflate that number for next year. So that number of 968 is exactly what it would be based on traditional, the traditional way to figure it out. So we just want you to know that it's, like, this year we put 1.5 million, and it was reduced by 600,000. We didn't do that next year. We figured it out, as we have traditionally, and we've been running on the money traditionally, so it's 968 for that special ed excess cost.
So, the last segment we have for you here is our five-year capital needs projection.
I'm sorry, I'm going to go back for one second. There is, the pay-for-play is something that we've talked about before, and I've had people in the community ask about that, that's the sports surcharge. So we looked at what the revenue is for the sports surcharge, and you can see it's $231,000 because this year we included the Jockey Hollow pay-for-play also. So if we were to say that pay-for-play should be eliminated, and I don't think anybody in this room would say that they think it's a great idea to have pay-for-play, but financially, it's something that we've always had. I've been here for 35 years, we've always had pay-for-play. If we were to cut that this year, it's an extra almost half a percent to the budget. So although I think it would be something that we would like to propose, at this point, it would raise our budget by almost another half percent, so we really weren't prepared to say that, but you could see, it's $231,000 that we would have to cover in our budget in order to eliminate pay-for-play.
Thanks, Jack. So next is our capital plan, and what we have here is, first section is related to facilities, and the 2017-18 column here just shows you what we've done. The new roof project at Stepney Elementary was just completed, $2.6 million. And then also, which you'll see on the bottom here, is when we had gone out to the public with the turf project, one of the things that we all agreed to is that we were going to fund $40,000 to the capital fund account every year for 10 years, so that when we need to replace the carpet, we have the funding ready to go. So that was something we assured the community, so that from a budgetary standpoint, we're not having this crazy $400,000 spike 10 years from now, it's funded at a flat rate over time, making it easier for everybody. So that's in this year's budget. Going to 2018-19, we have an oil tank that needs to be replaced at Monroe Elementary School, so that's in our capital plan, and then again, that $40,000 payment for next year for the turf carpet. Similarly, is the equipment replacement plan here, so 1718, we replaced two pieces of equipment. As John mentioned before, our intent with this is to create a relatively flat budget and not have five trucks go bad one year and have this big spike in terms of needs. So we've So we've looked to stage that out over time. The truck that needs to be replaced in next year's budget is $55,000.
Jack, that's...
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Sure, Dave, you go.
I thought that was under operational budget, excuse me.
Yeah, it is in the operational budget. We've put it here to show where it lives over time.
Because I was going to actually ask you why it was operational versus a capital.
You know, it's a good question, Dave. There have been times when this has been moved to the town's capital. Might be part of a dialogue at some point in time. Right now, it lives in operations, in the operations budget.
But it'll be paid?
Correct.
Jack, can you tell me where Jockey Hollow falls on the five-year capital needs projection? There is no Jockey Hollow up there.
For the roof?
For every, I mean, there's just no, yes. Yes, for roof, or...
Right. Given that it's the newest building, it's furthest out. The roof, I can get you that information.
I wasn't even looking at the roof. Like, under Monroe, you have replaced cafeteria floor. Under Central, but there's nothing for Jockey Hollow on there.
All of those buildings are much older, so those floors and those things need to be replaced. But at this point, there's no, we don't have a big capital project that we can't put in our operating budget to, for Jockey Hollow. I mean, that may come up, Jerry, in the next two, one, two, three years. But right now, there's not anything in it.
And then the other piece that we've really been taking great pains to ensure is maintaining the roofs that we have, to prolong their life. So we've spent a good amount of money on the repairing roof sections at Jockey Hollow, things like expansion joints, in an effort to maximize the amount of time that we get out of that roof, too.
So again, we keep the end in mind as we did this budget. I think through our slides, you saw a glimpse of what we were thinking of as we were putting this budget together. We were thinking about bringing, when we can bring STEM back. We were thinking about the state funds and the state grants as we were building this budget. So we hope that this executive summary kind of gives you a glimpse of what we were thinking of as we were putting this budget together. So certainly, Jack and I can answer any questions about this executive summary. We are going to move right into the next budget workshop for tonight, which is HR, staffing, curriculum, IT, and operations. But we'll take any questions that you have just about this general overview that we did, or unless you just want to wait until it comes up in our section. Okay. So, we're going to start with all these cost centers. HR, staffing, curriculum, PD, IT, facilities, and capital planning. Gabby's going to come up, and Sheila's going to come up, and we're going to talk about that. Now, remember, next week, on December 11th, we start our meeting at 6:30, and that's going to be special education and athletics. We're going to talk about that next week. And then finally, on the 18th, we're going to do a wrap-up, and any questions that you have on that, we'll go with. So, we're going to go, before we start, I just want to give you a quick overview of this budget book. So if you look at the first section of the budget book, section number one, those are our Board of Ed goals and action plans. And those are the goals and action plans that you put together, the board put together five years ago. Now, as you go through this, you'll see that we've met many of those goals. So we talked about that in September as we presented this to you, and we are going to have a special meeting to come up with new goals and action plans in the springtime this year with this board. But I just wanted to give you our goals and action plans and the work that we've done to meet those needs. The second is the executive summary that I just shared, that Jack and I just shared with you. And then, the next sections are budgets by category. So when we're going to talk about curriculum today, you're going to be able to look at section three. When we talk about human resources or staffing, that's section four, and we're going to refer you to those sections. Facilities is section five. Then there's a total budget overview of all the sections in the budget on six. There's a staffing summary. So when we talked about where we're losing staff and where we're gaining staff, you could go to section seven and see exactly by school where certified staff lives, where non-certified staff lives, and the changes that have happened. Section nine will be special ed, that we'll talk about along with section 10 athletics next week. And then, if you look at section, oh, I'm sorry, section eight is the enrollment summary. Now, in the past, we have included the Malone and McBroom demographic study. But I remember talking to you last month, saying, "Do we want to do an update?" And no one really felt that the update was necessary, because it was kind of, it was off a lot. Again, it was off 136 students just for this year. So what we've included is the actual enrollment from October 1, and some of the projections that we had. So that's what you see in that section. We didn't include the whole Malone and McBroom demographic study in that. So that's nine, and 10 is athletics and special ed. 11 is the revenue that I talked to you about, then the capital expense is there. So that's how the budget is set up. It is on our website. So anybody that's watching from home would like to go through any of these sections or look at any of these sections, those things are there. It's on the website. As we have changes or any areas that we wanted to focus on or that we found mistakes, we'll update that on our website and give you guys copies of that, too. Okay? So we're going to start with human resources, and Jack's going to start with that and point you to a section.
So what we put together is just a very concise overview to highlight key budget lines that have significant changes. At any point, feel free to stop us if you have questions in areas that we're not covering in this overview. So just to hearken back to the presentation John just gave a moment ago, this is that big slice of the pie. We are a staff-based entity. We are a service industry. We are a people business. So the majority of this budget lives within salaries and benefits. And in this pie chart that John had just shared, 80.41 percent, or 80 cents of every dollar, is used for salaries and benefits of the people that serve students in the district. And again, the ups and downs with all of our staff here. John just reviewed this with you. These are all of the changes related to our staffing in the district this year. The only other thing I'd like to just add with this change to the teacher interventionist is that it's really going to allow our folks to respond to needs. It's going to create a lot of flexibility in being able to respond to whatever needs our students will have within the elementary level. Another change within the budget, and this is in your tab four, this is a specific one. On tab four, you'll find this line, 751129. And you'll see that this is one of the larger swings budgetarily. And this line is AIDS, regular education, this refers to our par educators. And that's an increase of $179,000. And what comprises that increase is that contract was just negotiated this past summer, spring/summer. So general wage increases was 2.45 percent of that increase, $97,000 in total. And then the other piece that's within this increase is move to a single grade system. In the past, what we've had for our par educators is there were two grades. One grade would work with special education students, another grade would not work with special education students, they would work with regular ed. The problem with that setup was that there are times, lots of times, when duties change during the course of the day. You couldn't use somebody in both places, because you would get into a situation where the grade would need to be changed. It's really, it was very inefficient and not effective, similar to what I highlighted just a moment ago with the teacher interventionist. The nice thing about changing that title is we can respond to student needs, whatever they are. It's not locked into reading only. We have a math need, it's a math need, we respond to it. Similarly, if we have a need within regular education, we respond to it. If we have a need in special education, we respond to it. The grades don't inhibit that work with students. So this was a good change that the board was able to make within negotiations.
And we believe that the principals will have the flexibility, and they'll save on substitutes, because we'll be able to move people around more easily. If you're a par educator in this district, you're a par educator in this district, and you can work anywhere. Certainly, we're going to take in mind some of the training, but we're going to, it's going to allow us a lot more flexibility.
And some of the strategies we're using for containing benefits. Again, going back to the pie there, it's the place where we can have the biggest impact on costs. So one of the things we implemented, brand-new this year, was a wellness program. You had the chance to hear about that at the last board meeting, as you heard Signa say, I believe what she had stated, we were the largest number of participants of their districts involved in a wellness program. That's 190 staff that we have walking, and it was interesting, I was in buildings throughout the day today, there's a lot of people walking through our buildings, logging steps as part of this wellness program. So it's clearly having an impact on our folks, ultimately leading to more healthy staff, which is going to contribute to better insurance rates over time. Can only help us. The other thing that we've had is staff reimbursement for 37 road races to date. This is coming through Signa Wellness Dollars, another way of promoting our folks in getting out and getting fit. And then, we just had a conference call this morning on the biometric screenings that were shared in the last Board of Ed meeting, and we're putting that work together. We're hoping for February or March to have screenings in the buildings that are proactive in helping all of us staff identify small medical issues before they become big, expensive medical issues. So first and foremost, making our staff healthy and happy. And then, a major byproduct is saving money for all of us, the Board of Education and staff as well, because they're contributing to those copays. So really, a lot of potential positives in this work. And then the other piece here highlighted in the Signa presentation last week, the teledoc 24/7, doctor support via the phone, cheaper for employees, cheaper for us, in that if we're avoiding those emergency room visits, which are very costly, and using phone support to deal with smaller issues, it's a win-win for everybody. And then, as John mentioned before, Brown &amp; Brown has been very good, and they continue to work on things like looking at how we can renegotiate our contracts to get better savings in our current insurance plans. And also, another aspect that's definitely worthy of highlighting, the board did a really good job in all of the negotiations recently, and all of the post-retirement benefits have been negotiated out of all of our contracts at this point in time. So that, too, will have an impact on these savings over time. And then lastly, current pension trends for our non-certified staff have been very favorable. What that means to us is because those investments are strong, and they're showing really good returns, that continues to diminish likelihood that we would need to make any contribution towards that to keep those investments solvent. So that also will help us in saving costs.
Jack, it's, help my phone not ring off the hook. Could you explain a little bit more the reduction of post-retirement benefits?
That refers to the sunsetting of benefits for individuals who haven't retired yet, already in the system. Things in contracts like, if you were hired after 1995, you're not entitled to that benefit. So that's what the sunset refers to, not current retirees. Next up, we have Sheila Castinelli to talk to you about curriculum and professional development.
I did have one question, Jack, for you.
Yeah.
Human resource, line item 751250. Just explain to me quick reinstatement of clubs.
Yeah, we cut some clubs based on the million-dollar cut last year, so we're bringing those clubs back. And one of the things that we noticed is, if you look at what we actually spent in 2017, and what we budgeted, we're doing some true-ups, basically. I have to tell you, what we did this year is we went through line by line by line by line, and we looked at some things. And some things weren't in the, we felt, weren't in the right place, so we made some changes. So when you see some of the things that say true-ups, it's because we took it from one spot and put it into another, or, in this case, we never budgeted enough, and we were always trying to do catch-up. So we budgeted what actually will happen next year.
And is part of those stipends also the full reinstatement of the band?
Yes.
For the elementary?
Yes, those are morning stipends that they're going to look at this year.
But that's in there, too?
That's in there, too, yes.
Any other questions on that?
So if you look at tab four, those are the things, those are the budget items for human resources. And, you know, we looked at some things that we thought, you know, we wanted to share with you, so that was the par professionals. But if there's other things in that line item or that section that you want us to talk about, we certainly can do that as we go down the list. You know, you'll notice in negotiation reserve on 4-2, we reduce that by almost 200,000, because remember, we've had four, we've had four or five contracts that we needed to negotiate, we didn't need to have that. And again, what we put in the negotiation reserve is we anticipate what a percentage may be, so that's in the negotiation reserve to cover the budget.
So can you just, what contracts are left?
The end of this year, we're going to have to negotiate for the nurses. And then, we don't have anything for two years, right?
That's what I just wanted to clarify.
Teachers in two years.
Thank you.
Yeah, George.
You get a line for regular ed, and then a line for special ed. Those aren't two different contracts, correct?
They are not two different contracts.
Different lines.
The state likes us to, when we have to do the EDO one for the state, we have to take out special ed costs and regular ed costs.
Can you clarify the difference in percentage increase, then? Why that's different?
Yeah. It's really people. So we put the actual people in there, so, you know, teachers can go up a step, move over a lane. And so it's not just a straight percentage increase, because if I just got my masters, I go from the bachelor's to the master's step.
Also, we have more regular ed teachers retiring this year. So the thought is, is that we would replace a teacher who's, say, at the top of their step with a lower-step teacher. And so that's another reason why the increase is much less.
Okay, so we can move on to curriculum professional development. We can always come back to anything that you have.
So the big changes that you'll see in curriculum and instruction is actually reinstating things that I had put into the budget for this year before we had that million-dollar cut to Monroe. So the $21,000 that was cut for Teachers College is being put back. And what that means, what I had planned on doing for this current school year and budgeted for prior to the cut, was having our three elementary schools each having a staff developer for K through 2, and a separate one for 3 through 5, because that's the way Teachers College typically splits their professional development. And I wanted each building to have their own for both K to 2 and 3 through 5, so that way I didn't have to have teachers traveling between schools, and then dealing with delays of trying to get people there. And if we can have it in the building, it's just smoother for scheduling all the way around. So with the cuts for this year, we had to modify that, and we are currently doing just grades 2 through 4, which Teachers College doesn't typically do, but they very nicely did, because we've got a great relationship with them, and we've been working with them for the last several years. This is our fifth year, actually. And the staff developers love to come to Monroe. They love working with our students and love working with our teachers, because they see the growth that we see in our students every day.
And just so you know, this is section three, the things that Sheila was referring to.
Additionally, in that $21,000, in adding back the time, is also allowing us to go back into New York City. Teachers College does these things they call calendar days. They're one-day workshops, specific to a grade level or a grade range, and then it'll have a focus to it. It might be the reading unit of study or the writing unit of study, so it'd be more information on what the teachers are actually teaching. Our teachers love to go to these. And I get them, and they, as soon as I send out the email with the list of all the options, my inbox gets hit with all these requests. "I'd like to go to this and this," a first choice, a second choice, and a third choice. And the teachers love it, and they're missing it, not having it this year. So that would be part of that $21,000 that we'd be reinstating. With the curriculum writing, there's a lot of things that go into this $30,000. Our Next Generation Science Standards, we've had presentations from Roseanne and from Jim on how those standards have really changed. So it changes instruction, it changes the curriculum. Roseanne and Jim have been trying to do it through after-school meetings, through our professional development days, but they really need a bulk of time. And teachers don't want to leave their classrooms, because they want to be with their students. So trying to find other times to do this has been tricky. And then having the cut of $30,000 has really put everything on hold. They can get a little bit done through those weekly or monthly meetings, but not nearly the bulk of what we need to. So reinstating that would be great, especially for the Next Generation Science Standards. As John mentioned, this year, we're doing a pilot, and then next year, the real new test is out. So we really want to make sure that our students have the curriculum and materials in their hands, so that they're prepared for when they take that. We also, Connecticut adopted the national standards for the arts, for art and for music. We've started doing a very minor change, again, with our curriculum writing because of that $30,000 cut. We couldn't do a big jump on that last summer. So putting that back in would be very, very helpful. The interim assessments for Smarter Balanced, our teachers are using with students in grades 3 through 8 several times during the course of the year. But taking a look at those questions and the way in which they are asked, students are given a question... are given a question and asked to pick the possible, all the correct answers, so there may be three out of the four answers that are correct. If they only pick two, they get the answer wrong. So, it's working through, putting those kinds of questions in the hands of students, so that they can see what they look at, so they're more comfortable with them, so we would want more time for that. We're also doing curriculum reviews. If we haven't looked at a curriculum for several years, we want to bring it back and take a look at it, and see what are the updates that we can put in there. So, curriculum reviews are part of our curriculum writing. And then, as the secondary instructional leaders bring new courses that are being offered, we need to offer curriculum writing time in the summer, so that that course is ready to go before the beginning of the new school year. The twenty-five thousand dollars for summer professional development, as John mentioned, a couple of the different things that we've offered in the past, and we weren't able to offer this past summer. The next-generation science standards, there's actually training specific to that, at the different grade levels for K through five, and then six through twelve, that we would love to have some of our teachers take part in, that's offered only during the summer. The art standards, those national standards that Connecticut adopted, also has training in the summer for teachers, for art and for music. We've got the BYOT, we've got the Inquiry, we've got the Google Institutes, all things that were very well-received, and that our teachers took part in, and really helped them to grow professionally during the summer, so that way, they would be prepared for students during the course of the year, are things that we've missed from this past year. So, the big bulk and the changes that you'll see in my budget, and the lines that I kind of touch in here, are really bringing back the things that had been proposed, but were unfortunately cut. We shared this booklet with you earlier in the year, which had all of our scores, which is also on our website. This is just a couple of the highlights, just to reiterate the importance of curriculum development and professional development with our teachers and for students, is that with all of that work, our students grow, our teachers grow professionally, and are able to present information to students in a better way. Our language arts scores, as we shared with you, are so strong, and I really feel it is due to the work that we've done with Teachers College, and the way they get our students and our teachers to think about things, and to grow, and to stretch, has been amazing. Those staff developers really empower our teachers to challenge our students. Our former ELA, K-5 ELA coordinator, Deborah Walls, is the person who really pushed to get Teachers College here, and it was one of her proudest moments, for the fact that we had that, and the growth that we would see when we walked into classrooms. With her retirement, and the cuts, I am actually taking on her role of K-5 ELA coordinator, and working very closely with the reading consultants that are at all three elementary schools, to help really move this work forward. As you also know, our math scores aren't exactly where we'd like them to be, and with our K-5 coordinator Cindy Booker back in the classroom this year due to those budget cuts, I'm trying to take on some of the math support with Cindy, to help our teachers take a look at those interim assessments that we're giving for Smarter Balanced, to see where some of the questions are that we can help students. Those interim assessments are, really give us a lot of information to help the teachers to take a look at those questions. Like I said, it'll be, give the three answers that are correct in a choice of four. There's a lot of vocabulary in those questions, which makes it really tricky, which leads to that reading specialist being called the teacher interventionist, which is such a perfect thing for us to be doing this year, especially in light of our math scores. Our reading specialists know reading, and our reading scores reflect that. They have done an amazing job working with our neediest of students to really move them along, to not need as much support as they get into those older grades. But, we do need that help with math, and so many of these math things have so much language in them, and the language is very tricky. What's the greatest answer? What's the least answer? It's a word problem that has multiple steps to it that students are being asked to do. So, there's a lot of language that has to be dissected in math, so having these teacher interventionists support our students will be a wonderful thing.
I get what you're doing in the elementary school, but what are you doing in the middle school with regards to math?
We actually have math interventionists in the middle school already.
They're not certified.
Right, they're parapositions.
They're, yeah, they're not certified, they're not paris, they're non-certified.
Classified.
Classified people.
And we've never, I've been in this district for twelve years, and when I first started, and Deborah, Deb Cavaci, and Sue Austin, and I used to sit as three elementary principals to plan our budget, one of the things that we would always go to, and my first year went to Alan Byton, the previous superintendent, was asking for a math interventionist, a math teacher to support, like we had the reading consultant, and every year, it was not fiscally responsible for us to be adding staff at that time. So, this is a way for us to be able to support our neediest students, to get that extra support in math with a certified teacher. As we went around and talked to all of them, they were concerned on the math language, and did they know them. So, Cindy Booker is going to work with me and the reading specialists through professional development, through our April PD Day, and then, some other time that we can, in after-school meetings, to get them up to speed with where things are, and they'll work very closely with the classroom teachers that they already work with now, by supporting the students in reading, they'll now also do that to support them with math.
And we'll also see what happens with, how well this works K-5. We do have reading people, not as many at the middle school, but we might be able to do the interventionists at the middle school, too, to see if, if it works for us K-5, we can move it up.
In general, what type of math concepts are they learning in the middle school? And how is a reading specialist gonna help them?
Well, again, it comes back to, I spent the day with Kevin at a math workshop today, and again, it comes back to the language. You know, it's the same idea of understanding and dissecting a word problem, to say, what is it really truly asking you to do? And that's where a readings background can be able to give the direction to the student. And if I can just add one more, I'm sorry, Donna, did you want to say something? Okay. Really, if you go back to those scores for a minute for me, Jack, really, all of those scores could not happen without our curriculum work, without our professional development, and without all the people who are sitting behind me, and those K-5 coordinators, and the work that they do with teachers to help support students every single day.
With regard to professional development, what is the state mandate? Because we have to provide special, professional development to our certified staff per mandated by the state of Connecticut.
Yes.
Fifteen hours a year.
Fifteen hours.
We have to provide fifteen hours a year, and that's what our PD days do.
Yes.
But, some of this other stuff, the summer institutes, the summer professional development, it gives you a longer period of time where you can work with groups.
The coordinators that you want to put back into the budget, do you think that those positions have anything to do with the Blue Ribbon School Award, and School of Distinction, and different awards that Monroe School has got?
I mean, I think it's all just part of the team. When you look at our curriculum team, the reason why our students perform so well is because we're, we look at, we look at the standards, we look at how well our programs are meeting the standards, you know, we put in a new math textbook a few years ago, but what happened is that K-5 coordinator last year started to look at, what are we missing? It's just, this is a book, it's not the curriculum, it's a book, so she started to look at how we have to supplement. And so, she would meet with teachers weekly, and say, okay, this standard is not being met, we have to supplement it by using this, and then, she provided that. So, I think when you look at this district, and you look at the K-12 curriculum leadership, from the K-5 coordinators, to the 612 secondary instructional leaders, to Sheila and Jack, there's continuity there, and we're making sure that everybody's on the same page, it's not, you know, when I first started, you got, you know, you got a book, you shut the door, and you did what you wanted. But, that didn't really help students, because I was doing something different than the person next to me. Now, we're really coordinating our efforts to make sure that we're doing the best that we can, and it's paying off. So, yes, I think it has all to do with that.
Right. I think, like, when the state cuts our budget, and the fifth-grade band was at risk, that's crystal clear to parents and stuff, how that's gonna affect us, and I think that this is so important, these coordinators and these positions are so important to, such a huge aspect in the elementary level, you know, getting a good grasp of it then, will lead you on the good trajectory for middle school, for high school, and so forth, and it's such a big part of the program, and I'm not sure that, it might be more behind the scenes, I'm not sure that people would be aware of the importance of this, and why we need it.
I agree with you a hundred percent. That's why, anytime I talk to any group of people, I talk about those coordinators, and how it's going to make a difference as we go down. I talk about professional development being research and development, and people get that, people in the business world understand that, and when I sit at a parents' council, or some of the nights that Jack and I went, and we talked about that, people were shaking their head, they understand that the way their company grows and moves, is that they don't just stay stale. How many times have I heard, well, they're, they were educated to be a teacher, why do they need professional development? We can't stay the same way we've always, kids change, curriculum changes, ideas change, we want to stay up with those.
I was a mom in this district for a long time, before I was a Board of Ed member, and I think as a mom, I don't think I would have understood the importance of that, like I do now.
Yeah, I agree, I think it's difficult, they don't see it, they don't see the behind the scenes, the midday meetings, the after-school meetings every Tuesday, people don't see that, but like you said, if you cut, you know, a sports program or a band, they would see that, because it affects them.
You have an award-winning school district, if people want to move here, increases your house value, and it's just, not that that's why you're doing, you're doing it for the kids, but it's just a big, part of a bigger picture.
Yes, thank you.
George, did you have another question, too?
The reading specialists, are they on board with providing additional direction in the other subject areas?
Yes, and some of them are doing it at times already, they've done it when they take a look at some of the ESVAC questions last year, when the interns came out, and they saw the big need for all of this vocabulary, they were pulling small groups during wind time to kind of take a look at that. So, they've already done a little bit of it, they're also excited to see what something else looks like, and they'll do it for short periods of time, based on needs of students.
The interesting thing, too, is, you know, there was some anxiety with it. The math has become much harder, you know, so one of the anxiety pieces was teaching fifth-grade math now, so, it's a transition, as Sheila mentioned, the professional development is a really important part of it, we're not gonna, we're gonna ensure their success through giving them the training they need to be successful with kids.
And Jack, Sheila, and I, and the principals went to each school last week, and to talk to the reading people, because we, I didn't want, we were gonna present this to you, and I didn't want them to hear it here, and I want, we wanted to get the feedback from them, and overwhelmingly, it was positive.
John, didn't you even bring the MEA on this?
Actually, that's true, we, we talked with the MEA first, MEA leadership, and they actually, thanks, they actually came with us, Marie Blake came with us when we talked to the teachers.
Oh, that's incredible.
Because, again, we're all on the same page, what are we doing it for? We're not, you know, what's the bottom line? Is, so our students can be better served, and the leadership of the MEA agreed, and they came with us when we presented it. Thanks, you're, I forgot to say that.
Can we go back to the K-5 coordinators again? To me, I think we have a very big risk not having especially a K-5 science coordinator with our next-generation science standards coming out, I mean, I think that'll be a huge issue trying to roll out these new standards, and again, these are not our standards, this is the state of Connecticut's standards that say, you need to implement this. So, that's a huge risk if we don't have a K-5 coordinator for science, because I sat on the K-5 team for Math in Focus when we implemented Math in Focus. I don't think Math in Focus would have been implemented as successfully as it was, if we did not have Cindy Booker as our math coordinator to implement that, it was a huge undertaking.
Absolutely.
What is the risk, and this, because this could be a very serious problem, not only just K to five, but this is K to twelve, because our science is being tested in five, eight, and what is it now?
It's gonna be eleven.
Eleven? So, it's gonna be an eleven. So, it's really from kindergarten straight through, you know, eleventh grade, so if this does not get rolled out properly, as our other programs were, like Common Core for math, and, and English Language, that's gonna be a huge problem in the district, because we're gonna have parents and kids, you know, just not being understanding, and we're gonna see a very significant reduction next year to science, if we do not replace these coordinators.
And, and, you know, our districts, our, other districts are preparing their kids for that, with those kinds of positions, and some more, so, we will be at a disadvantage, yeah, we agree. That's why we worked hard, again, we think one point five is pretty fiscally responsible, but we worked hard to make sure that those coordinators were in there, and, you know, we looked at, okay, is, you're putting all three back, what does that do? And, and so, as a team, we worked together and said, okay, we have somebody with some expertise in that area, maybe down the road, we might want to bring that coordinator back, but that's why we thought at least two of the three we need.
Right, and I don't think the general public understands what, as Shannon said, they don't, it's a beside, behind-the-scenes thing, they don't realize what a huge undertaking rolling out a brand-new science standard, you know, for the entire district, or in this case, well, just not us, but the whole state, is the undertaking of rolling that out, and rolling that out successfully, it's not a simple, here's the new standards, go with them.
Just teach it.
Teach it.
When does that go live, the new science standards?
They, I'm sorry, they are live.
They are live now?
Yes, the state already adopted them, so we have been in the process of adjusting curriculum as best as Roseanne can on the elementary level, through those afternoon meetings, and through the midday meetings.
We're behind, we're behind on implementing these standards.
We are fortunate that Roseanne is on two different state committees, she's on, excuse me, she's on one state committee, and then Jim Stozel, who's our 612 secondary instructional leader for science, is also on a state committee, so they are, kind of, Roseanne's rolling up her sleeves and actually writing the test questions, she's on that committee, and Jim is on the more curriculum-end committee, so, we're getting the latest information, but, as John said, we're a little bit behind, because we don't have them working on it full-time.
Any other questions for curriculum?
Yeah, on PD, the, I'm looking at the first line on the, on the budget, there's an increase there because of changing needs, can you just describe what that is?
Are you talking about the professional educational services? Actually, that's not professional development, that's outside costs for, for special ed. So, the special ed numbers have gone down, but the cost to educate kids using, like, IPP and those programs have gone up, so that's why there's an increase of eighty-four thousand. Yeah, you know, it's, it's, it's under curriculum and instruction, but it is a special ed part that Kay will talk about when she comes up, but, so it is, it's a little confusing, that some of this, some of these lines are special ed and curriculum instruction, some of them are athletics and curriculum, so it's, it's a little, any other questions on professional development or curriculum?
The next section is on technology, and this is in Tab Five, and in that tab, the first line we're gonna look at is seven-five-six-five-one-one, this one is software renewals, that's a reduction of six-point-one-three percent, a decrease of twelve thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. Reason for that is some greater use of free applications. Then, the other thing that's going on, too, is we're making a change with our web hosting, and I'll show a little more about that in the next slide. Another line in this Tab Five is seven-five-seven-three-four-zero, this one's technology-related hardware, and this one's an increase of a hundred and forty percent. The reason for that increase, it's sixty-nine thousand dollars, is the last few years, Gabby, what would you say, last three or four was in the lease line?
Yes, actually, probably since two thousand and thirteen, so four years.
So, about four years. Most of our technology replacement hardware funds have lived in the lease line, it really wasn't the right place for those funds to live, it's for leases. So, rather than do that, we trued things up, we're putting those funds into the technology-related hardware, that increase is a hundred percent for replacing our aging Chromebooks. We have Chromebooks, we were one of the first adopters of Chromebooks, and they're old, and they're at the point where they're gonna go end-of-life quite soon, so we really need to get serious about replacing a lot of them, so that we have sufficient working devices in our classrooms. So, related to the website, just to let you know what's going on with that, and where we're also realizing some savings, but I wanted to keep you in the loop about what we'll change. Our current website, the support ends for it December twenty-eighteen, a year from now, we will start working in February to create a parallel site, it won't use the same address as our current one, we'll have a different URL for it. We will point people, the community members, parents, Board of Ed, to the new site, give people a chance to look at the new site, give us feedback on the new site, before it goes live July twenty-eighteen. So, we make sure both are up and running, in good condition, everybody's happy with what we're putting there, or most everybody's happy with what we're putting there, and then, we put it up July one, and give everybody the summer to acclimate to the new site. Now, with that, we were very fortunate, School Messenger, the company that creates our announcements for snow days, that whole process, they also provide websites, and because we're already a customer, we're able to save money by bundling everything together. Actually, the John slide on consortiums, they're on the state bid list, so we're able to bunch it together. So we're able to bunch it together with a lot of other districts. So we're seeing some savings there, too, within that software line. And then also in the technology budget, just to remind everybody, because this was important savings for us, it was done three years ago, we renegotiated our copier contract at 757310. And the, this current year, you'll see an increase of 6.18 percent or $8,000. The reason why there's an increase this year is we needed to add a copier at high school special ed. IEPs are among the most sensitive documents that we have. We don't want them being printed out in other locations. So we tried to do that with local printers, but it wasn't working well. So we needed to put a copy machine there. So in future years, we saved, our projected savings for the copier contract was $640,000 over five years. I brought that back to 630. But when we renegotiated this contract, that's the real savings that we're looking at over the five-year duration. So that was a real success for us in, in saving some funds over time. And then the other success within the copier contract is in the two previous fiscal years, we saved $50,000 in paper because of the way these machines work. And just to refresh memories on this, we've had this in the last couple budget presentations a few, the two previous years. The way we're saving that money is, forgive me, these, these numbers are a little small, but the bar chart shows you what's going on. The machines delete manually or automatically. They refer to it as maintenance. So the delete maintenance means if I print something into the copy machine and I don't, I have to, all of us, when we go up to the copy machine, we have to use our security badge. We swipe in, oh, it knows it's Jack Zamri, my print jobs are all there. If I don't print out that job in 24 hours, it gets deleted. It goes away. A lot of people make mistakes with printing jobs. And you, in the old days, our old copy machines, we'd have two or three jobs print out for the same one thing. Well, this manual, you can see here, we've saved, on average, this is a monthly report, about 800 bucks by that feature. The other thing that happens is I go up to the copy machine, I see, oh, I've got five print jobs. Oh, I printed that one four times. I clicked the delete button four times and I only need one of those. So I manually delete out, well, the savings, this is our actual report for the month of November for the town and BOE. Through those two processes, we saved $1,442. So this is another one of those stretching mechanisms we use with our budgetary dollars to maximize taxpayers' revenues as best we can.
And another instance where we teamed up with the town for this photocopy. So we worked together on that to get a good price for both the town and the board of ed.
It's one contract for both sides. Next, we have Gabby DiBellaZi.
So just very quickly, this is really talking about your infrastructure. So that's the nuts and bolts and what goes on behind the, behind the classroom walls or in the classroom walls, I guess. What are, we have a slight increase of about $3,000. It's really because we took back the field at Chalk Hill and we have, we're going to, we irrigate that field for soccer. And we looked at what the cost was for the fall and we said, okay, we need to bump that up a little tiny bit. So it's a small increase of about $3,000. We've also increased contracted services. We have a backlog of maintenance to do because of the budget cuts from the state, the million dollars. So these are basically quoted repairs on our HVAC system and our boiler repairs. So we're going to try to work through those next year. The last thing we want is for our heating system or cooling systems go down in the buildings and have both students and staff uncomfortable, cold, actually. We really don't want children to be in the buildings when it's cold. That's not a great idea. It's not really great for learning. Transportation, we have a slight decrease of about $78,000. It's really because of the way that we're getting our special ed buses allocated. As you saw, there's some students coming back in the district, so we don't have to transport them. So that's actually a little bit of a savings for us. Electricity, it's a 6.93 percent increase, and that's primarily related to an increase requested by Eversource from the DU PC for a delivery charge increase. They're asking for a 6.79 percent increase on delivery charges. That is on residential customers. So we are considered, believe it or not, a residential customer as a school system. So if Eversource gets that, you, too, will see that at home, unfortunately. Equipment, non-instructional, this is the truck. We have a 2009 GMC Chevy, GMC Liftgate truck. It's one of our plow trucks. While a 2009 doesn't seem that old, the mileage that that truck logs, a lot of it is in reverse as well as in forward. And it's pushing snow. It has a sander on it. It gets corroded. It's really, you know, plowing, plowing school parking lots is not really great for trucks, even if we try to wash them and clean them off after we salt and sand the parking lots and plow. They just, they get, they take a beating. They really, really do. And lastly, we have a decrease, and John mentioned this in the executive summary of the bond principal. Again, this is because as of this year, we finally, we fully repaid a $100,000 interest-free loan to Eversource for Pure. That was part of the Honeywell contract. So our bond payments, bond principal payments back to the town for the tax-exempt lease goes down to $301,000. And so that's where that's coming from. And this is just very quickly, this was already briefly touched on in the executive summary, but it's our capital plan. Again, we completed the new roof at Stepney. The oil tank replacement at Monroe Well, the board has a little bit of a decision to make here because we could pull the oil tank and replace it for $117,000, or we could just remove it and the removal would only cost about $12,500. The, the key there is that Monroe Well was converted to natural gas in January, no, sorry, January of 2012, and we have not used oil in that building since then. Oil's actually a lot dirtier. There's a lot more maintenance to be done when you have oil-burning boilers. So gas is a cleaner way to go, but again, that's a board decision.
And just so that the board, we'll talk about this in the springtime. If we decide to not replace the oil tank and just get rid of it, it would be so cost prohibitive to put another oil tank. We wouldn't be able to put it underground anymore. We'd have to, you know, so if in years to come, we thought oil was the way to go, it would be a lot more money to put oil back. But that's something that we're going to present to you in the springtime and you can make a decision on that.
And then looking out in the future, Fawn Hollow driveway drainage and reconfiguration, we have some plans on that. It's really because Fawn Hollow doesn't have a great slope. And in the winter, we get some icy spots and no matter how well the guys go out and try to sand and salt it, it just, you know, you have icy spots and they're just dangerous. Massey High School, there, here, too, there's an oil tank replacement. Here, we would actually pull the tank and replace it. This, the building here has done, has burned both oil and gas in the course of a single year, depending upon winter rate fluctuations and things like that. So here, we sort of, we can play the hedge and we play the float a little bit more there. Long-term, replacing of the flooring in the all-purpose slash cafeteria at Monroe Well, it's just old and it's lifting in certain places. We can repair it in-house in little pieces, but a full-on replacement, and that number is really a placeholder. It's a real approximation. Same thing with roof repair and replacement at Monroe Well. The 20-year warranty expires in '21, '22. You know, if it's, if Stepney's any indicator, we're probably looking in the $2 million. But, you know, that's, it's a long way off still. And finally, we would eventually maybe be looking at replacing and actually installing a true HVAC system at Central Office. The return there is a plenum system, which basically means it's an open attic space and there's no true duct work up in the attic there. So it's kind of interesting. And finally, equipment replacement. Again, John referred, or sorry, Jack referred to this during the overview, the executive summary. We've done the Cushman and we did the floor rider machine. We're looking to do the truck next year. Looking out ahead, we're looking to do another walk behind floor machine. We're looking to replace the 350 truck and even further out, another Cushman. You know, the equipment gets old and it's used. And you can see, it's a 1984 Cushman. I don't know too many people who have anything from 1984 left at this point. We do a good job up here with duct tape and, and other modes of repairing and replacing. So, you know, the guys do really a nice job, but 1984 is a little old. So that's kind of where we're at.
So this is our, we did the highlights of the different sections that we talked about today. The same thing that we'll do with athletics and special ed. I know it was a lot to digest. It was a lot of information. It was a lot of numbers. But certainly, we can start the next meeting with questions. If you have questions and you want to email them in advance, we can make sure that we get that information to you also. But we can start the next meeting with questions. So any questions on anything that we provided today? So again, you know, we did provide you a lot of information, I know. We threw that out and we highlighted what we thought would be the questions that you would ask. Again, there's not a lot in that, but this budget, it's, it's mostly staffing as far as salaries and benefits. So the other parts, we just wanted to share with you any little things that we have. Okay?
All right. So our next budget workshop, which will be just a true budget workshop, we will not combine it with our board, regular board meeting, will be next Monday night starting at 6:30 here. And so we can, even though that night, we'll be doing athletics and special ed, if there's any questions with regard to what's been covered, we will go over that also that night, too, and stuff. So we will do that. We will move on to old business, which there's none, so we will move on to new business. And we have a first review of policy 5141.3, which is students' health assessments. George, do you want to discuss that?
Yeah, Jack, I'm going to need your, your help a little bit with this. But basically, we combined our existing policy with some new language from CAPE.
Correct. Yeah, it was the core policy from CAPE. We retained a little bit of our current language reviewed by the nursing supervisor in Cape Moser.
Right. And that's just language that's specific to the Monroe School system and our requirements for kids coming into the district.
Okay. And is this something that changed because of state, the state, or is this just an update we did ourselves?
Primarily recommendations from CAPE.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions regarding this? All right. This will be up for then a second review next time. And that's it for tonight. Does anybody have anything else before we move to adjournment? Yes, Jerry?
I'd like to recognize Alan very quickly. At the meeting we were at a few weeks-
Yes, thank you.
At the meeting we were at a few weeks ago, Alan was recognized for 10 years of service.
10 years of service to the Board of Education.
Congratulations.
Anybody else? All right, hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Jerry. Second, Christine? Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Great, thank you. Motion passes. We will see everybody next Monday night at 6:30.